Okay, we are ready to go.
Morning, everyone. I'd like to call this Meeker County Board of Commissioners' regular session to order on Tuesday, September 2nd, 2025. Would you please stand and join me in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have the public comment period. Is there anyone here from the public who would like to to address us? Okay, hearing none. Board meeting agenda, is there any changes?
Yes, we had one addition, Mr. Chair, from when it was originally published. It's a resolution approving an application for Minnesota Highway Freight funding, and that would go under Phil Schmals' item, item six. It'll be six B.
Okay, hearing nothing else, is there a motion to accept the agenda as amended?
I'll move the agendas in length, Mr. Chair.
Motion by Commissioner Olberg, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Van Orde. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Same sign, motion carries. All right, consent agenda.
Today, we have approval of the August 19th board meeting minutes, approval of the Health and Human Services, county and hospital accounts payable, approval of an Office of Justice Programs Agreement for the Crime Victim Advocacy Services, and that is the consent agenda.
Any questions on the consent agenda, or is there any item that you would like to have moved out of the consent agenda? All right, hearing none, I would look for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Van Orde. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Skamke. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion carries. Mary Ellen Wells and our financial chief officer, all right. Good morning, Tyler and Mary.
Morning, everybody.
We've got three updates for you, and Tyler's going to handle the first, and then I'll handle the other two. So, okay. Good morning.
Appreciate the concern. Financials have been stable over the summer. Cash has been stable, steadily increasing, actually, which is great to see. Accounts payable has been holding steady, no major increases, no decreases either. Current ratio is still at six, which is very strong. Operating days cash on hand is at 284, and then total cash on hand is 458. So, very, very good financial position to be in. When we look at revenues, we have a few areas that were outperforming budget, inpatient, swing bed, and outpatient being the top three. We do have a couple areas that are lagging, but we're monitoring those closely, and they're just lagging by a percent or two. So, no cause for concern there. Other operating revenue is significantly over budget. This is primarily our pharmacy revenues, so that's good to see. Expenses slightly over budget, about 2% over budget overall, but with our revenues being 6% over budget, that's to be expected. Once revenues go up, expenses generally increase as well. For bottom line, total bottom line of 2.9 million so far through July. Are there any questions on the financials?
Questions for Tyler on financials?
I don't have a question, but an observation. We've been working hard to get swing bed up, and I'm glad to see it. So, kudos to our staff, I think, right?
Pass that along. They have been working hard.
Yeah, so that's good.
Our CNO, Angie Deitel, has been, that's been a primary focus for her this year, and it's showing. It's, we're doubled.
So, the board knows. We've talked about this for a couple years. So, it's good to see. And ortho, we've made some changes, and those are going to pick, they have quite good expectations.
We're expecting quite a bit of an increase. We've just added, St. Cloud Orthopedics remains our partner, and they've just added a shoulder expert who's highly regarded. He's now going to be coming a couple of times a month.
I think it's important that we just get the word out to the public that we have that available now. I think not everyone realizes that. The people that are using it, I'm hearing great things about, so.
Great.
Good news.
Okay, with that, let me update you on a couple of other items. First of all, we received notice from Centricare that they were going to be shutting down the clinic in Eden Valley. So, we've been exploring the option of potentially taking that over. We are meeting with the officials there in the next couple of weeks to see if we can transition. Centricare is putting on hold any, pulling out of any equipment until we determine whether we can take, you know, replace that. So, given it's in Meeker County, it looks like geographically it would be beneficial for the organization. The community will continue to pursue that and give you an update next month.
I appreciate that, Mary Ellen, because there's been plenty of talk within the community of a loss that'll be if it if it closes, so. And I think geographically, it does serve a pretty good area, so. So, hopefully that.
The key will be finding staff. That's typically now.
There's probably some Centricare staff reading the paper.
We've, we've, yes, our applications, many positions have gone up lately. Yes, yes, unfortunately, but yes.
Yeah. But to be fair to Centricare, too, the way it sounds, they were just, this was a change that other entities had done, and they were just reached that, the time in their world where they could actually make that change. So, it was not a shock in the industry, just a, just a standard procedure, I hate to say it, but it affects jobs.
Unfortunately, but true, yes.
Yeah.
And I think they're trying to support the medical school that they have and trying to address. I think what was cut was a lot at the top, and not what, you know, they want to give more and better patient care.
Different focus.
And I think they were one of the last big healthcare systems to actually do it. Is that right, Mary Ellen?
Yeah, yeah.
Yes. They recognize the need, and as we all do, that the, I'll call it the market. Healthcare industry is somewhat volatile. It's settled down a little bit now since COVID. We've been, we've been past COVID. But healthcare workers' compensation issue, not workers' comp, our staff's compensation, we need to make sure. And that's something that Centricare is very sensitive to, is the need to stay competitive in the market. So, that's, that's one thing we're working very diligently on as well. I didn't have that as an update, but let me go on to the, the big one is our building project. That is coming along. It's no surprise to you. You know, I've been mentioning this just a part of the time I've been here, that we are at the point now, we received bids back from several construction companies, and they've been extremely positive. I can't give a firm number yet. We are in the process of reviewing and selecting one of the contractors. The plan is that we will come to the hospital board the end of September, the end of this month, with all of the information that we've been gathering for several years to present our case, if you will, in final, or close to final form. Tyler and his staff are completing two financial studies. One is an affordability study. What is it, what kind of debt can the hospital take on? And then the second is our financing. And so, we're looking at several different options for financing. And it's a timed financing as well. We don't need to take out a loan, if you will, or any kind of debt immediately, but over time, because this project is going to take a couple of years. So, Tyler's working on that, and we'll be in draft form coming at the end of the month with all of our plans. The, the timing, then, would be informational, the end of September, to the hospital board. And if all goes according to plan, we will then have public, if you will, forums sharing the information in the beginning of October, and then at our October board meeting, ask for the board's approval, and then come to this body afterwards for approval to move forward with the plans. We would then begin the detailed blueprints development, and hopefully before the snow melts, we'll be able to start the remodeling of the lower level of the current hospital building, and then break ground in the spring for the addition. So, that's the update. We're pretty excited. People are recognizing now that this looks like it's really going to come to fruition. It's a bit, you know, there's some nervousness with it as well. Any kind of a major initiative like this brings some risk. We're hope, we believe we're going to be mitigating that risk and not create a debt load that is intangible. We're at the point, though, that if we do not do this, we will see such a degradation in the services here that it will be difficult to continue. So, not to make a threat at all.
Information only.
But, Mary Ellen, and I can only speak personally. My doctors knew here, of course, Leaf, and the excitement that he showed and the fact that we were going to have a new facility, it's, it's got to help our recruiting efforts.
It's helpful, it's, yes, and it will help with recruitment and retention, because there are many options out there for physicians and providers. And so, we have got to present, and the culture and the, this community offers such a wonderful opportunity that we just need to make sure our facilities match that.
Well, it's fair to say that, that our new ortho and the equipment we put in there, we're state of the art.
Well, I'm sorry.
We're at the top. Our equipment's number one.
Oh, yes, absolutely.
And that's what we're aiming to do with the rest of the hospital, too.
We have a saying that we're, can I, what do you think? Good enough. Isn't enough anymore.
Yeah.
Right. We have to be strong and competitive.
There's a, you always reach that point. And I said, you always reach a point like that in any business. You know what I mean, where it's, you gotta make a, you gotta make.
And, and give credit to those who came before us to have a savings account that gives us the opportunity to really be financially stable and strong.
Yeah, foresight, to see it coming, you know, so.
How many hospitals in Minnesota have 200, what was it, 298 days of cash on hand?
There aren't many.
Very few. Yeah, total is 458. Less than 10, I would say.
Yeah.
How many, how many county-owned hospitals in the state?
Six.
That's what I thought.
And that's something, I don't want to bring up another subject. It's something we should be looking at as well, to make sure that we are positioned strongly. This county has taken steps to keep us strong by having a separate board that gives a lot of, empowers that board to really run a nice, a nice ship. Most counties haven't been in the position to be able to maintain a hospital, financial risks and other reasons. So, we've been, we've been successful.
This might be a slightly odd subject, but how is your employee retention? Do you have job openings? How, how is your staffing?
Much better, and around the state. I just got a call with the Minnesota Hospital Association, the CEOs from around the state, and we're all noticing more stable staffing levels. There are still some. I mean, we still have a couple of opening staffers, temporary employees, but it's becoming less and less. And the swing beds is an example where we see a more stable nursing staff. Gives us the ability to admit patients that we hadn't been able to a few years ago. So, it's, it's, it's better. Good. But we're not out of the woods completely.
How's the pharmacy coming? I see there was a big crane up at the hospital when I drove by.
You know, you know, it's, it's, and we won't be having tours, just so you know. You will not find a sign in the hospital pointing to where the pharmacy is. That's the industry standard. Because of the drugs and all that are in the pharmacy, we have high security around the pharmacy. It's a couple of weeks behind, but it'll be opened up in the end of November.
Yeah, I think so.
That's the plan.
That was a project that kept getting put on the back burner for way too long, so.
Yeah.
It's great to get, it's good to get it done.
We just hired another pharmacist, so we're fully staffed there, and we'll be able to produce, they compound, really, I'll say toxic drugs that are for chemotherapy and other infusions. And now, with that new facility, we'll be able to serve many more patients who don't have to travel than for these compounded drugs, because we'll be able to produce them here.
And for the employees, what, the working conditions that our pharmacy is in right now, and all of you saw it, this is going to be big for them, too.
Yeah, yeah. Just about everyone, so many.
Chair, I was going to say, if all systems, all the stars align, things fall into place on your remodel, when would you, what is your time window?
It'd be two years from the, the spring, so 26, it'd be 28. Spring of 28, we'd be completely finished.
Completely, okay. You'd start?
We would start, we would start January.
Of 26.
Yeah, we'll, we'll start, actually, the architects will be going on the detailed plans. But then, we wouldn't, we would get started with the remodeling in the 2009 building. We're filling in some empty spaces in the building. We can start that in the wintertime, but then breaking ground in the spring.
Okay, so about a two-year window.
And that includes the demolition of the 1950s building, where some of you did see.
Yeah.
Anything else, folks? Well, thank you, Tyler and Mary Ellen.
Thank you. Very positive.
Thank you for your support.
Very happy with staff. Pass it on.
We'll do. Thank you.
Oh, one more. I'm sorry.
Hope this is good news.
I just want to reiterate that this project is not using any tax dollars.
Yeah, I was going to bring that up.
Thank you.
We appreciate that.
Thank you.
The only question I've had about that, well, a couple of people have said to me, and this time you're using ta, and I said, no, 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 we're not using one dime, never have. The hospital has never used any tax dollars. So, it's important we stay on that message if we're, so.
Thank you.
Judy, we are ready for you. Judy Holstrom from Lamp Kinship.
Yes, good morning, everyone. I think all of you are very familiar with our program, and I have my sidekick here, who has been a great support to the Litchfield area mentorship program. We wanted to, first of all, just thank you so much for the financial gift that is given each year. And if I do understand correctly, we are still in your budget for a gift of 5,000. We appreciate that. As I said, Gina has been a great support for us with, I always, I have to change my thought here, Meeker Health and Human Services. I still call her Social Services, and we appreciate, she has one year left in the grant, and so, we're able to have some dollars. As I think most of you know, our program, anything we do, we have to raise the money. And we all know, everybody's looking for dollars in lots of different ways. And a year ago, I appreciate them saying, "Not good enough." I love that statement, because our board said, "It's not good enough what we are doing either, and we need to reorganize, and we need to work on our program." So, I wanted to just give you a couple minutes of an update. So, first of all, our board members, I wrote them down so I wouldn't forget anybody. Joanne Kudla is from Dassel, and she is our chair. Bruce Dickey is our vice chair. Melinda Larson, our secretary. And Paul Vernick is our treasurer. Jared Tabor, who represents the probation office, is on our board. Steph Hanson, who represents the school district. Judge Beckman is on our board. Joe Carlson and Jackie McGee from the community. And then Tina attends when she's able to with all of her reorganization. We may have a new person, but she gives us a lot of good guidance in different ways that we need. A year ago, they decided to reorganize, and I came on board a year ago in May, and our program coordinator resigned in August. And so, it's been a year of reorganization. I told the board, "Hold off. Let's just see. Let's get this reorganized. Let's put all the pieces of the puzzle back together, get them all in a neat shape and form." And I'm excited to say, we did it. We did it in a year. We have now just recently hired a program coordinator. Her name is Erica Bowler. Her husband is the associate pastor at First Lutheran Church here in town. And Erica herself is also an ordained minister. Her background is youth and family services, and I am extremely excited to bring her on board. She will be working 20 hours a week, the same hours that I will, so I can devote the attention to marketing, awareness, the financial side, like I was hired to do. And then Erica will be able to work with the program side. So, the program side has the three parts, the one-to-one matches, and we are currently in this state where we just have to have our match with a new mentor, so we're excited. And the mentee does happen to be one on Tina's list, and so, we're very excited to be able to bring this new mentor on. So, hopefully, in the next couple of weeks, we're going to wait till Erica comes on staff and then be able to make that match. She will be doing all of the program. We do try to do quarterly large events, and she will be in contact with them. She'll help them. She'll give them training, which I'm really excited about. She'll be able to bring some, some good training to both the mentors and our families. And so, we're excited about that. The group activities is another area that we are working on. She has also done some after-school programming. And as you recall, last time when I was here, I kind of talked about the 4-H program and coordinating with our 4-H program here locally, too. And so, we are going to work with the 4-H program and do an after-school program. So, that's going to be a new thing that we'll bring to the board now, this next month. And then the third part is our lunch buddies. Anybody interested in being a lunch buddy, let me know. It has exploded. We had four lunch buddies when it first started, and now we have 14 in Dassel. We have 14 here in town, and we are starting ECGC. And so, I'm so excited to bring this program over to the Atwater Elementary School. It's in Atwater. So, we'll be starting that coming up now in October. So, mainly today, I just wanted to thank you, as always. If you find a few extra dollars, we'd appreciate it and send our way. Any donations that you know of, any groups that you're a part of that would like to support our program, we'd be more than happy to visit with you. Do you have anything you want to add, Gina?
Just a couple of things, if I can. We had dollars designated under the Prime West investment grant, so that's what Judy's referencing. There is currently 10,000, I think, actually, in the budget from HHS. That budget's not finalized yet. So, that's the dollars she's talking about. When we started this a couple of years ago now, you know, we were looking at, we don't have in-home services in the county. We don't have a lot of service base beyond individual therapy, things like that. This is a way to build connection with kids that we feel like is preventative and helps, helps them build connection, and then especially with the 4-H, also helps build that sense of competency, and they've gained confidence through that. So, it's a very healing thing to have somebody invested in you. So, what we've done with Lamp is we have, we get releases of information. Everything is permission. But we do, when we do referrals, then they know that those referrals are coming from us, and we're asking them to have a target of about 10 kids a year that they serve under our programming. And that's, you know, with the financial support. Now, we haven't quite, we probably actually have met that goal if you take everything. We don't have 10, maybe, individual matches, but we have a ton of kids involved in the 4-H club. We have lunch buddies. So, when you take all that, we're probably actually exceeding that. I haven't counted lately. But these dollars are really just meant to support that. These folks do really great work and have to raise 80 to 90,000 dollars a year. So, a lot of their effort is going into that. So, where we can find them assistance with being able to focus on the kids rather than just the fundraising, that was our goal. And I think they just needed some space to be able to reorganize and to be able to kind of take another run at it. The group was formed 20-plus years ago. It was just time for kind of that restructure. They did a, they worked with somebody and did a strategic plan, and we've just really seen the benefit of all of that. And Judy is amazing, as you may have seen in her previous work. I just feel like this group is really on the right track, and we just really value everything that you're bringing to our families and our kids. So, really appreciate all the hard work. Thank you.
I have a question. How many kids are, are you currently have a mentor match?
Right, we have eight, and then this next one will be, the new one will be nine. And of those, yeah, I would say probably half at least are assigned with a county social worker. And then with the group, we have 15 kids that youth, that we need to find matches for. So, that's what Erica, her job will be, is to go out and find mentors.
So, when you have a match, how often do they meet?
They are asked to, for a two-year commitment, and to meet four hours a month. And it can be more than that. So, four hours a month, if you think about that, an hour a week, or two hours every couple of weeks, you know, really, it's not a lot that we're asking. I really do feel that maybe a lot of them do more than that, from when I hear of the different things. We started a few, a few months ago to do what I put on the agenda as a mission moment, so that at every board meeting, we have a mission moment, and we take a look at that mission and say, "Are we meeting it and how?" And so, I had one of our mentors give a little update as to what she does, and she said, "Every month, I think to myself, I've got to have these grandiose things to do." And she said, "All they want to do is just get together, and there's times that they just want to get together and visit." So, I think, you know, if you're going to go to the park with your family, then you bring, bring, call up the mentee and see if they're able to come. It's, you know, and the, the new mentee that we are in the process of matching, this is what just really struck me as this program is needed. I met with him and his mom, and the question for him was, "What are your three wishes?" You know, we all have wishes of things that we would like to have. And he said, "Well, my first wish would be, is to have a house. All my friends have a house. They have a backyard, and they can run and play, but I don't. I live in an apartment." I live in an apartment. Okay, I said, well, I said, you know, we'll find somebody that has a house and your mentor will, and you'll be able to go visit. Hey, well, what's your second? Well, and his second was, is that he would really like his dad to be here. And his dad passed away a year ago. Okay, that, now it's, my heart is pumping and I'm just really thinking. And I thought, you've got to come up with something fun too, that we can actually do. And I said, well, if you had a third wish, what would it be? I think I'd like a dirt bike, he said. And so I was telling this story to another one of our former mentors. He said, oh my word, he said, my brother has all kinds of dirt bikes and whatever. Let's get this put together. So I think one of the first things we're going to try to do with him is to be able to do a dirt bike and just have fun. So these are, these are real kids and they're real families that are missing something. And that's why I said yes to coming on to this group is, there is a real program here. And I thank those that started this program several years ago.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
So are most of your children brought in through social service or school or a mix? How do we?
It's a mix. I would say a lot of them are school too. You know, but the school may bring some in, like the lunch buddy part, you know, I don't see if they are connected to the county, but the lunch buddies, the social workers at the school will identify the students. We have a little Miguel who loves Legos and he doesn't have any at home. So his lunch buddy brings Legos every, every time. Lunch buddies is twice a month for about an hour. It's the second Tuesday here in Litchfield. Wednesday will be over, second and fourth. Tuesday here, ACGC will be Wednesday and Thursday is in Dassel.
So these aren't just kids that are in a program with social service? Because, you know, this can go into children that don't, they, they aren't getting anything, but that doesn't mean they don't have the need. So it isn't just kids on programs already?
Right, it isn't just the county, correct.
When we were looking through some of the lists, trying to get a handle on what was going on with everybody, Steph and I sat down with Judy and between the two of us, we knew who those kids, so it really was maybe half on that particular day.
Yep.
What is your annual budget?
About 84,000.
And you're looking for some larger donors now?
We are, yes. I was, I was telling Brandi as we were walking in, because I hadn't seen her for a while. I said, the bake sales bring in a couple hundred dollars.
Oh, you can't make it on bake sales?
So when, when I came on, it was kind of like, that's what we were doing. It was the chili luncheon, if you remember, doing. It's the bake sales, it's, you know, the little, I said, we need to come up with some more substantial financial donations. A lot of the grants out there, how can I put this? The grants out in the greater Minnesota world, you have to have so many of color, you have to have so many of diversity, you have to have so many that are, you know, probably incarcerated. It's, well, we're not to that point. We're kind of a step up from that. And as you all know, I mean, our diversity in Meeker County is very, very small, so we don't qualify. You know, you have to have 10% or more, you have to. So those are some of the larger grants that you can do. We have been very fortunate. Walmart awarded us a $3,000 grant that helped us with our county fair event, which was very exciting. And we have dollars extra, do some Bobcat. We just got that email last week, so $2,500 will come to assist us with the lunch buddy program because we pay for the lunches for the buddies. We have been looking around, PACT for Families gave us a very nice grant of $4,500. And that we are working with our 4H program with. So we just need to kind of look for those larger financial sums that we could kind of, we used to have a Brimmer, right? That you used to get. And they reorganized their structures and so that's no longer available for us. But we belong to the Minnesota Nonprofits Association and every week I get, you know, different things that you can apply for.
Part of it is too, that a lot of grants these days want to start something or they want something new. And we really need operational dollars at Lamp. So that's another challenge, I think. And we've talked about, I think PACT has some, we could, we could maybe talk to them about, I mean, that was really great with the 4H program, but they may be able to do some operational assistance. And, you know, one more year of the Prime West reinvestment grant helps too.
Mr. Chair, your strategic plan, is that on the website? Is it publicly?
Well, that's a very good question and it is not on our website. We are redoing our website. It was one of our areas that needed to. And our awareness and marketing committee will be meeting, but that's a very good thing to do. So I will make note of that to, to add that on. What we did, it was right when I came, we were a part of that too. And so I told them that Ridgewater College had some excellent people to lead strategic planning sessions. And so they did hire someone to come in and do that. And I wasn't a part of that meeting, but we have four main goals. And so each month then I go through and update them. One was financial stability. One was increasing the student or school connections. One was increasing awareness and marketing. And one was to increase our mentors. So those are pretty basic, basically said, but those are our four, yeah.
That's good.
And so each time, each month, then we kind of say, this is what we've accomplished. Now let's go this step further. And so it's probably time for us to come on to do another one of those. But we're in the process of kind of redoing our mission, mission, vision, values, all those kind of things as well. So, but we'll put that, yeah, that's a great thing to put on our website, so.
Mr. Chair, Judy, have you, I'm just thinking, from Eden Valley area, like through the ministries, you know, the Knights of Columbus.
Oh, okay.
Christian, I mean, there's so many groups within the church, I don't even know them all. But, I mean, they're all open and willing a lot of times. And a lot of times would not only have some dollars to go with it, probably personnel that would go out and, and get involved.
Yes.
Type of thing. So I was just wondering if that's an avenue that you seek?
Yes. And I know that the one here in town with St. Phillips, the Knights of Columbus here, they've been good supporters of other places. And so they will be somebody that I will look at. Eden Valley Watkins is, ACGC took a little precedence just because I knew a couple of people over there. So we did that. But Eden Valley Watkins is next on our list for lunch buddies. And I do have a couple of resource people over there that I would like to tap into too, and then try to slowly get that going. So at that time, I think then we would like to go and say, would they be able to help us with lunch buddies there? We do, for lunch buddies, we do four main times a year. We'll do a little Christmas gift, we do a Valentine's, an Easter, and then end of the year. Otherwise, it's mostly, so, and I don't want to take too much time for you, but lunch buddies, you come to the school and you have lunch with your student. And then you have about 20 minutes, 20 to minutes to a half an hour where if they need some help reading, if they just want to sit and visit, if they want to play a board game. I did recently just purchase some different little kits, some little craft things that they can do together. Like I mentioned, Legos. I had a bunch of Legos of my sons at home. And I, so I just put them all together and brought them in for Sandy to use with Miguel. And so they have about 20 minutes to a half an hour. They can do whatever they want to do. But it's that quality time of having an adult praise you and saying, I hope you have a good day today. Because they may not hear that otherwise.
They do work with, I think it's Kiwanis too, like.
Yes.
They're, so they do all the work and the prep for the Legos that they do.
Yes, the turkey bingo.
So that's another way, I think, community groups could sponsor an event and assist like that. And takes a little pressure off the folks that are constantly volunteering and doing all the things that, because it's a, you know, it's a large group, but it's not when you put all the work that they do, it takes a lot of time.
Well, and I think lack doesn't know diversity. You know what I mean? So, you know, to, when we create categories, there's always gaps left in there. And I don't, wherever you're at, I mean, it doesn't matter. So I think it's good to get these local groups, probably are more effective and, and more willing partners in a lot of this, programs like this and do, and have good results.
Right, yeah. Yeah, the local Kiwanis program is kind of where Lamp started here in town with Judge Drange. And he was a Kiwanian and I happen to be a member of the Litchfield Kiwanis. And so they have been extremely supportive. Different events, if we have a larger event, I will go to a group like the Rotary. They gave me $300 now that we are going to use for going to Nelson Farms to give the kids an opportunity to be able to go there. So it's kind of like each one will try to, to figure out, but I would like to be able to, it's kind of like Tina said, the operating dollars. You know, and it's, I, I work 20 hours a week and Erica will be 20 hours a week. And we could each be 40 hours a week if you really wanted to stretch this program and, make it really be fun, so. Thank you for all the great interest. Any other questions?
Anyone else? Well, thank you, Judy and Tina.
Thank you very much.
Very much for the work you do in. And now with some electrifying comments.
Did you practice that?
Good thing it was a three-day weekend, I don't think I'm all three.
That's a result of a three-day.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Board members, Scott Johnson, Excel Energy, Community Relations Manager.
Andrew Welch, Excel Energy, citing a land rights agent, do most.
We are missing one person today, but we're going to try to do our best here, citing persons. So we're going to make do with, answer your questions. A little bit different people than, than maybe you're used to. I think I've been most of your meetings and stuff. We've had a change and now Andrew is taking over to lead, pretty much lead the project and stuff. So we have a short presentation that we can go over and then ask questions.
Yeah, so Minister Energy Connect, update. Requestion is a double-circuit 345 line from Garbin down to Lyon County up to Sherco Power Plant in Becker. It's going to be monopole steel primarily. As you can see, the picture there is a very similar representation of the structures that will be built. It's going to be approximately 175 to 180 miles, I believe. We're still working through final alignments, post route permit here. Purpose is to replace the coal-fired electricity up near Sherco and use the interconnect rates to connect power sources in southwest Minnesota to where we have the rights to put those megawatts in at near Sherco Solar, or Sherco Coal Plant, being retired. Go a little bit through the regulatory process. Found a certificate need in March of '23 and route permit in October of '23. We'll kind of go over a little bit of the procedural history real briefly. Part of the route permitting, we had to propose two routes, purple and the blue. We had the, we introduced our two routes in October. We had the public input and scoping in January and February through the EIS draft work through the Department of, or PUC, Public, excuse me, whoever's head. Public Commission of Public Meetings in 2024, starting in February. These meetings were held by the EERA, which is the Energy Environmental Review and Analysis. And they studied both routes. And due development, they came up with a draft EIS and environmental impact statement October 8th. The blue route was then identified as Excel's preferred option. And then, once they developed the draft EIS, it went to the ALJ meetings and public hearings in the fall of 2024. And the ALJ studied and finding the facts, released their conclusion that the blue route was the least impactful route in January, February of 2025. And then once their finding facts were released, we had a verbal route order from the commission in April. And then we've received our written route order in June of 2025. So now we are currently working on engineering, working with landowners and trying to secure easements across the entire project from Garbin to Sherco Solar. So the final route through Meeker County is on the slide. We came up primarily along County 4 and we cut across north towards Watkins. So that was kind of a real brief overview of routing. Do you have any questions on routing? Through the PUC?
Is there any, this is a firm route now in Meeker? I mean, or do you have any twists in there?
We have a right-of-way that'll be 150 feet found within a thousand-foot corridor. And it has, the center line is the ordered route from the PUC. So the blue line, if you go on any of the maps, on any of our websites, that is the route. We have the ability through engineering and work with landowners to move that 150-foot right-of-way in that thousand-foot corridor, which is typically centered on the 500 feet each side of the.
Blue line.
Blue line, so. The route is set, the final alignment within that route is, is a little bit of tweaking, but primarily the blue line is, is the route.
Mr. Chair? You may be looking into this, but how many landowners are affected in Meeker County? Do you know how many you're working with?
I do not. The person that couldn't make it today is the one that would answer that, of course.
I apologize?
Yeah, so we do have, I think, all those stats, but I can text him and see if he's able to answer in a minute here.
Not a problem.
Have you begun negotiations with the locals?
Yes.
You have?
We are just starting in this county for easement acquisition. Previously, we had right-of-entry agreements for both the purple and the blue routes because of the short timeframe between our order and the, the construction. We were doing environmental and cultural resource surveys, I think, last year and this year. So both routes should have had contacts previously. And then now we're, we're trying to button up the areas that we weren't able to get to before and then easement acquisition's starting.
So, Mr. Chair, there would have been some of the so boring, pre, pre-stuff that we could do ahead of time, knowing that it was one or the route or the other to do some of that preliminary engineering, so.
Yeah.
But now we're into the easement acquisition where we're dealing directly with the landowners on the transmission line route itself.
Is there, outside of that, so within a thousand feet, you can move. Is there, if you have a landowner that doesn't want it, wants to go outside that thousand-foot, what, is there a process to accommodate that landowner? Or what, what is their alternative?
No, particularly, I think the alternatives are, are trying to find an agreement way to get through the property. And then there's, there's, what I hope we don't go to is condemnations for the existing route corridor. The PUC has ordered the route. That's where it has to go. To go outside of that 500 feet would have to have a route amendment approved by the PUC. And I, they aren't going to necessarily do that for individual landowners because when you move one pole, you're going to be moving all the poles in line with it because of the tension. So you're going to be impacting more landowners for one landowner. And then, part of the public scoping process was try to identify public input in, uh, February of twenty-four to try and get, get some of that stuff.
I kinda, I kinda knew your answer. I just, I, and I understand that that's the answer.
Yeah, there's some areas that'll be rough for to get through. Not everybody, not everybody wants a power line.
Did you, this was part of the, um, public input that was held at the, the Opera House, a, A couple of them, yes. Month or so ago? And how do you feel those went? Did you have people who had issues? Were they able to be addressed? Do you feel good about, you know, the results of those in terms of just the communication with the public? Yeah, so, Mr. Chair, Commissioner, um, we, there, there was many of those open house meetings, preliminary, and then with the findings. Quite a few people attended, not everybody, but they all submitted written comments or they had the opportunity to submit written comments, kind of like the county did itself to the commission to put of record. So, um, everybody, I, I, all I can say is everybody had a chance to speak, um, at, at those or, independently, if they didn't want to attend in person, to do a written about the routes themselves. So, um, I was probably at most of them, quite well attended out here. Some other areas were not quite, you know, attended. But, you know, going through, uh, farm fields, those type of things, quite a few people were interested in the route, round of procedure. So if that answers your question.
Well, and I would say, having been there, that it did seem, and I'm not sure how accurate that is or not, but, um, it, it seemed like, at that point, it was not, things weren't set in stone. And that it seemed to be much more flexible in terms of being willing to take the input into consideration. You know, so I, I felt good about that, but I'm not sure how that ends up translating and.
Yeah, so, Mr. Chair Commissioner, so all those comments were read, um, and valued by the commissioners, PUC commissioners. They said they read through every comment that they received and took those into account for the routing, which, which route and those type of things, so.
Correct me if I'm wrong, they are a part of the public record now?
Mr. Chair, yes, they are.
Yeah.
Chair and Commissioners, we'll move on to the easement exposition process. Uh, again, I apologize, my coworker couldn't be here. He's leading the, the, uh, effort for this. Uh, we have a, a company, WSB is our primary contact for the landowners for acquisition. Um, and it's being overseen by Chris Rogers, who's from Excel Energy. So we, we negotiate direct with each landowner. Uh, easement language is specific to the properties. So addresses, accesses, uh, crop damages that we need to, to work out, uh, potential drain tile and other potential impacts that they might be worried about on their properties. Um, then we, when we get an easement, we will be paying crop damage and tile repairs as needed. I think, right now, we have a contractor, Quanta is the primary construction group on this project, would be MJ Electric, who's part of them. I believe they will be responsible for either doing the tower repairs or contracting with a local tile company to, to work with it. I know people get pretty sensitive on, on how the tile is repaired. It's a big, big deal. We don't need to back up their field or anyone's connected to it. So easement provides Excel Energy the ability to build, operate, and maintain the infrastructure, uh, and do any maintenance and repairs as needed. A landowner retains the ownership. They are paid for the right of way across the property. And then, landlords can elect, there are different options if they really don't want it, which is another point to, Chris Schmitz, is the, uh, there is a buy the farm option as well. I don't know that a lot of people elect that, especially farmers. It's, it's hard to sell, this property, they've been farming forever. It's kind of like quick easement exposition process.
Mr. Chair, I'm interested, how often do they do that to say by the farm?
I don't have the stat in front of me, but it's, it's pretty small.
How is, how is the price determined?
It's, it's determined through, uh, real estate. They go through and do their, uh, appraisals.
So we, we hire appraisal?
So it's a fair appraisal of the?
Yes, yep. Um, Mr. Chair, County Commissioner, when we did the CapEx line, the big transmission line that runs along I ninety-four from, from Alex to Becker, uh, there was only a handful. If I want to say off the, my, top of my mind, it was like ten, ten people. But usually, those people were ready for retirement. They, there was something, other factors than just the transmission line itself. There was opportunity for them to step out of, of farming at that time, at a good time. In those parcels, before we even bought, the word was out that, that we bought those properties, that we've had multiple people asking to buy those parcels back. So it wasn't so much a detriment to it, it was an opportunity for those farmers.
So you bring up a, a good question there. So you buy the property, do you sell it back to an interested party or do you retain it?
If I, my memory, Mr. Chair, is that we've sold, sold all those back to interested adjoining landowners is typically where, where they go to, but they could be, you know, open market bid, you know, those type of things, sell, auction, yep.
So initial work right now is in Renville and Redwood Counties to the west, as they're gonna be the first counties that'll be constructed. We're gonna be starting sort of in the middle of the line. Kind of by the written ver, order, heading south to Garbin. There it is, there we go, yep. Yep, so we'd be kind of starting right in the center of the project, kind of towards, towards Renville County's northern border and working our way south. Um, that'll be twenty twenty-six, and then we'll be coming back and heading north later in twenty twenty-seven. So I think a lot of the construction right now is preliminary scheduled for twenty-seven in Renville, or, uh, excuse me, Meeker County. That's very preliminary based on, uh, current schedules. So I guess it kind of brings us into construction process, but do we have any other thoughts on the easement exposition, acquisition?
Well, I do have a question, and I don't know, I've asked this question before. Help me out with this one, Steve. Was it sixteen hundred acres that was being converted into a solar in Renville County? Is that what we saw in the paper?
Um, well, one was listed by, I think, uh, Lyon County was sixteen and I think, and then Renville, they listed by the, the, megawatt, and I think it was two thirty-five, so that's fourteen hundred or somewhere in that range, too.
So are they, are they a part of this? Is, is, are they doing that so they can tie in or are you unknown of that?
So, Mr. Chair, maybe, maybe I can answer that. I seen that same thing in the paper. So, um, I actually talked to, uh, the previous person that's in Andrews about that, because we, we don't have, you know, we have a route now. We don't know, we kind of know where our substation is in the middle, those type of things. But they have their, their PUC order or grant now to build that in Renville County without a endpoint per se. We have no signed agreements, no RFPs, anything like that out there for solars right now. Uh, that's gonna change, obviously. So really, the cart's before the horse and some of that, but that's the way they proceeded, um, with acquiring those, those rights for building solar farm in Renville County. So very good question. I asked the same thing. It's a definitely changed procedure, the first one that we know of, where they actually had PUC approval to do that without an endpoint for, to take that, that power, as of now.
And I, I can add to back on that a little bit or add to that. Until you have interconnection agreement, the, the plan doesn't go. They won't build anything until you have interconnection. You gotta have a place to go with the power. So you can do a plan and get permitted.
Okay.
But if you don't get an interconnection agreement with Excel, who I believe is kind of the only player in that game, for the most part, in this region.
Yeah, yeah, right. Uh, Great River Energy was, is the other transmission fighter that was listed in the article as well as Excel Energy, so.
Okay, okay.
Right, but.
It could be them too, but, uh, but until you have the inter, interconnection agreement, they won't build the, the site. So even if it's permanent.
And then, did I see on the map that we have that Sunflower Substation? Is, is that what it's called, Sunflower? That is in Meeker County, isn't it?
Mr. Chair, you, you are correct, yes. I don't remember what the size of that substation is. Was it forty or eighty? I, I can't remember size, but yes, it is in Meeker County. That's kind of our midpoint, midpoint for.
So you're looking to acquire that forty to eighty acres for that substations?
Yes. And, and I believe that's been pinpointed now. I think we know where that is at and purchase agreement signed is where I, I think we're at that point already.
As in, and the route permit had an expanded area for the, the associated substations for the project, to be included in the PUC permit. Then we can move on to construction process. Like Scott had mentioned, we are working on geotechnical investigation, trying to figure out what soil types are so we can design foundations. Uh, they believe every structure is getting a soil bore, so we're working very hard on finalizing that route within the route corridor, within the, uh, permitting corridor to, uh, get our soils nailed down for final design. They're gonna be single pole structures for the most part, except for some of the angles. We'll have kind of just two monopoles where the, the tack mark, without arms, so they'll just attach directly. So those are some of the, the sharper angles, just because of the tension on the wires greater, they have to have their own supports. The construction method, uh, they'll be, be driving cranes to set towers on the concrete structures. And then, uh, wire work will be kind of a combination of helicopters and ground based equipment. Typically, for speed and efficiency, the, the lines will be seven wire poles at certain mileage, because you can't go over certain temptions. They'll have reels on each end of the line of the wire pole, and then they'll pull all the rope through with a helicopter. And then, then they, once the helicopter's gone, they pull the conductor back with that rope. Sometimes they're hard lined depending on the tension.
I know I've asked this before, but there will be, um, wires on both sides of these poles, not just one. Cause I think on the one going up Alex, it's one sided, isn't it?
So, Mr. Chair, you, you are correct. As of right now, they're, they are building it for the other side as well. As, as you know, if you've probably seen, driving that, all the crossings are already double circuited. I think majority, maybe ninety-five percent are, are double circuits of wires on both side. They did that when they got the permit from MinDOT, so we didn't have to come back when we had to restring again. So, but the other side will be from Alex to Becker, double circuited very shortly. I don't know, you probably know that project. But within the next year or so.
Okay.
Yep.
It's gonna be, so.
Correct, that project's supposed to start this fall.
Mr. Chair, what is the height of those poles?
I believe they're a hundred and forty-ish feet.
Hundred and forty, okay.
It depends on terrain.
Okay, and the lowest, the, the lowest wire, uh, what is that height?
The engineering clearance, I think, is thirty-five to forty feet.
Okay.
So, so they're probably about sixty feet, so midspan, midspan is the lowest point of that, where it has to be thirty-five or forty feet above, above ground. So that's why you see the varying lengths. It's not flat, right, nearly. So we need a minimum clearance. So any farm machinery or anything else.
Clears.
Yes.
Yep.
Well, and, uh, your Sunflower Station, if I'm looking at the maps, is Southern Acton, Northern Daniel.
I'd seen that, that, but now you said you have a purchase agreement signed on it.
That's what I believe, yes.
Or that's what's proposed is on the map here, if that's the same area.
If you want, excuse me, Mr. Chair, if you want confirmation, we can definitely, we, we can definitely get you confirmation on where that parcel is.
That's.
That'd be, I, that'd be good information.
Okay.
That would be good.
Cause once, once you cross twelve on four, you're on four almost to Cosmos. I see you take a jog about a mile or so north of Cosmos and you head west.
Correct.
And then finish out heading south again. How far west is that? About a mile, mile and a half, two?
I can measure it in my phone.
I think you only got three miles to the county line.
Yeah, you're in Candy High County pretty quick there, so.
Yep.
And you don't touch any part of Candy High County with this, do you?
No, the county line.
Just the line, yeah.
On the line, but you're actually, you stay in Meeker and Renville.
We're on the west side of,
but it's all, again, three miles or something.
Yeah.
Might be right on the line, county line.
Okay. Just, I was just, it's not a big deal. I just was curious as to.
So, Mr. Chair, we, we also have to work with Meeker County on our hall roads, you know, all those kind of things, uh, where the access is. But we'll be working with, what we're proposing with Renville County, we'll duplicate it in every other county, get the county engineer, who's I'm sure already contacted, county, uh, excuse me, township commissioners as well. Get them in all one meeting and, and work through the hall road scenario, what we see. Give them some projections on what they'll see for, um, what we'll be using for equipment, what, what type of equipment, um, duration. Just a lot of details, so both county and township snow.
That's good.
When they, when they expect, when we're, we're constructing those type of things, what kind of vehicles, what time of day. Just work through where, all the details with them, so we can keep that dialogue, dialogue open.
Yeah, and please do, because we're not the road authority for the townships.
Right.
And, um, yeah, it's best that they're well informed on what's gonna go.
And, Mr. Chair, we, we also plan on mat, matting their mats, so they don't compact the soil, those type of things. Uh, I think pretty much the whole, the whole transmission right of way. So they are in connecting, interconnecting mats that lessen the impact, uh, that the property, land itself.
Oh, that, that, that's why I'd like to know where that Sunflower Station is exactly, because I got, there's one of our neighbors has got a dairy up there and a dairy right in that neighborhood. And I'm, I get asked questions all the time on it.
Yeah, if you had a P I D, that would be good.
I'm a district, but I'd still like to know.
Yep, no?
Yep.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Is, just curious about the, the lines themselves. Is that, is that, do they cause any, like, electrical interference with radio, TV, any broadcast mediums with the area right around the, the lines?
That's a great question. I do not know the effects of the EMF on broadcasting. It shouldn't, but I'll have to look into it.
Cause I'm just thinking, I, you know, on CASA six every day to just to go Kato, it's like my radio goes out because you got power lines on each side. And it's like, well, that would kind of suck if I lived around here.
Yeah, the EMF is supposed to be kind of down to normal layers by once you're outside the right of way. But as far as stuff traveling through to your antenna.
Yeah.
That's a little different.
I'm just thinking about, you know, homeowners, if they're, how close any of the lines come to homes and that.
We have had that discussion, as you recall, um, because I have had, uh, folks down on County Road Four ask, okay, we're on vibrant. And we're not hardwired to our house. And so we've, um, you assured us at one of the meetings that if there was an interruption, it was going to be fixed and at no cost to them, so.
Chair, I, I, I just can't speak to it. I, I hate, you know, I'm not, not the expert on it, so I don't want to give you false information, so.
Back, uh, just for the Kenny High County question, this bottom five miles is shared on the county border, and right now it's on the west side of, of the road in Kenny High. And that's about three miles east of the county line once you're on this section, north and south.
Okay.
More detail, I have that five miles and then three miles in. There we go. I think that was the, the overall end of the, the presentation. Again, it'll be MJ Quanta is the group constructing. And, and they also will be searching for laydown yards. Right now, they don't have any in Meeker, uh, that they're looking for, so. They do, they will be the ones reaching out for conditional use permits. So they do, they will be the ones reaching out for conditional use permits and that type of stuff. But currently, no plans for laydowns. Those were not included in the route permit.
Questions from anybody?
Oh, I'm professional.
Good, I guess we're good.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you very much.
And if you'll send us that location, you can send it to me and I'll get it to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Phil, I've just been reminded by Beth that I'm now thirty minutes behind.
Are you going fast?
No, 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 no.
Just giving him a hard time.
Good morning. Phil Schmoll is Public Works Director. Two items for consideration this morning. The first one is to consider awarding quotes for fixing a few bumps and dips around the county. So two of them are on CASA six, one related to a culvert installation from 2020, and the other one related to some settlement of a poor subgrade material area around a curve on CASA six. And then Site C and D in your packet were small culverts that were installed last year. And instead of leaving them gravel for a year to let the free stock, the settlement out, we paved them in, knowing that we'd come back this year and put some new asphalt over the top to fix them up. So we sent out four quote requests in early August, got three numbers back. Granite City Paving of St. Cloud was our low quote. I've already talked to them, and they're ready to go if we're ready to move forward with awarding the work.
So I have to ask this question because they're almost half of everybody else. That was, that drew my attention right away when I looked at it, but.
Yeah, I don't know the ins and outs of what they're quoting, but I'll say a small contractor on this type of work is going to have an advantage over, you know, Knife River. How eager are they to try and do this patchwork versus large scale highway paving? So I'd say that's the biggest thing you're looking at with Granite City, a smaller operation that does more small scale work.
And you indicated in your conversation with them, they're ready to, ready to go almost right away, huh?
Yep. Hopefully, twelve is supposed to be opening this Thursday. If that happens, I would like to see them out there end of this week.
And so how long do you anticipate that section where that culvert is having to be closed?
The culvert should be a day, maybe two, depending how they stage their operation. The curve area, the settlement is a longer stretch, so that could be a few days.
Okay. Questions for Phil?
Nope, I don't have anything.
Then I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to award pavement repair quotes to Granite City Paving of St. Cloud, Minnesota, for an estimated cost of thirty-nine thousand ninety dollars.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Samke. Is there a second?
I'll second, Mr. Chair.
Second by Commissioner Schmidt. Is there any discussion?
Other than the concern about the, you know, significant, significantly less, lower bid, but they were all given the same specs, I'm, you know, so.
And we hold them to the MinDOT specifications as it's cited in the quote request. We'll be on site monitoring their work, so we'll make sure it's what we want.
We've seen this before.
Yeah.
I mean, we're, if Knife River is doing big projects, if they got to pull people away to do it, it's, we'll do it, but we're going to pay.
They're going to pay for it, yeah.
I mean, that's, I get it. So it's good that we had a, it's good that we had a low on the pick.
Yeah, for sure.
And the fact that they can get to it fairly quick is also a good thing. So, all right, no further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion carries.
Second item for consideration is the one you added this morning at the beginning of your meeting. It's to approve or pass a resolution of support, or, sorry, a resolution authorizing Public Works to execute documents to apply for a Minnesota Highway Freight Program grant. So this is targeted at the CASA thirty-four and Highway twelve intersection, Minnesota Freight Program. It's a federally funded program. Money filters down to MinDOT, and then MinDOT distributes it via this program. So the timeline on this funding would be twenty twenty-nine or twenty thirty. The amount of money we're applying for is about two point three million dollars on the freight program. And then our target is to try and make up the majority, if not all, of the difference in our economic development, transportation economic development application process we're also going through with the state right now. So, yeah, this application is due tomorrow, so if we get this passed, we'll ship it in.
With that said, Mr. Chair, I move to approve resolution authorizing Public Works to execute the necessary documents apply for a grant for Minnesota Highway Freight Program for the Highway twelve and CASA thirty-four intersection improvement project.
Hey, we have a motion by Commissioner Schmidt. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Van Ort. Any discussion?
This locks us into nothing.
Correct.
This doesn't mean we're going to go ahead and put a roundabout.
No, this would be step one to commit the majority of the funding we're going to be looking for so that we can actually get going on some detailed preliminary design.
Thank you.
Any other questions or discussion?
Does this fit our, our timeline, twenty-nine to thirty, twenty twenty-nine to twenty thirty? I mean, I.
It's on the longer end. I mean, ideally, I think we'd be looking, twenty-six wouldn't happen, twenty-seven we'd be pushing at, twenty-eight, I think would be realistic if we could really start putting things in motion today. So twenty-nine, thirty, a little longer than what we'd see ideally.
I think I have more questions than answers since the Litchfield paper thing I read, so that's why, to me, we're kind of starting over with this whole discussion. But this doesn't affect any.
Yeah, the timeline's going to be largely driven by the funding that we are successful in receiving.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Here, no further discussion. This is a resolution.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Samke?
Yes.
Commissioner Van Ort?
Yes.
Commissioner Oberg?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Phil.
Thanks, Phil. Phil, any update on the Highway Minnesota twenty-two CD twelve crossing?
I have not heard anything from MinDOT. I know they talked about using our County Road three as a detour when the crossing was closed, and I sent them up construction dates, and it went, it went quiet.
Okay.
Three's under construction now. If we're off of that road in a month, that'd be pretty good. So six weeks would be my best guess for.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thanks.
And we have our annual report from Joel.
Good morning.
Facilities Director, I just want to go through, started our annual report through the maintenance department. I guess I'd just like to start out a little bit with just what kind of responsibilities the department has. I mean, we perform routine maintenance on all the county buildings and grounds. Try to provide a safe and, and, you know, work environment for the employees and on the buildings and grounds. We provide daily cleaning, you know, all the buildings, keep them completely clean. Provide lawn mowing and snow removal of the buildings. We also deal with a lot of the budgeting and maintenance of the supplies, and then detailed records of the repairs and maintenance. We mainly have the five buildings, maybe the three buildings is what we do the most work in, to impound and highway, our inbound and food shelf is minimal maintenance. As you can see here in this slide, it shows kind of all the, this is just parts of the equipment we have in the buildings that we maintain. You know, the chillers and boilers and exhaust fans and the difference at the Justice Center is we have the generator and UPS, which is kind of the backups for like our LEC and the jail. The highway department, that's a heat pump system, that's more like a geothermal type system out there. So there's a little bit different types of things that are cooling and heating out there. And then our, we have a government center here that's, we've got a bunch of new, you know, with air handling and condensing units. And that, along with that, it's, a lot of that stuff is what we are doing on a quarterly basis. You know, we're doing changes, filter changes, operations of, you know, maintenance, things like that. I guess on the next slide then, we got, as me as the facilities director, we oversee all the county staff and, or the maintenance staff in the department, do annual budgeting for the department. You know, basically doing the overall, with the contractors and management of the contracting for the facility. And then we do on call when troubles are coming on a call at night, some weekends. And then building inspections and code, you know, to keep them up to code and standards. Communicate with all the county staff and maintain the needs, their needs. So that's one thing we do do, and we work with all the county departments. You know, there's really not no county department that we don't kind of have some type of contact with and deal with, and how to manage, you know, their needs and what they need to have to be, you know, successful with their business. Create a plan. We do long-term planning, you know, also. I'm a part of the safety committee. Brad, our facilities coordinator, he's recently moved into this position. And his responsibilities are typically just, you know, dealing with kind of how it's system with the facilities director and things that we need to do, help oversee management, you know, management system, which is our work order system, which he, you know, we have a system that generates work orders, preventive maintenance work orders, kind of ways to, people to put their work requests in for us to maintain. And system providing preventive maintenance schedules, that's what that does. And then provides preventive maintenance, does the preventive maintenance type tasks, you know, helps with that, assists with that and directs that. Assistant director with, you know, budgeting, assistant director with ordering supplies and, and then assistant, especially projects type things. Now would be like, projects would be like anything that's kind of out of the ordinary kind of plans that we do over the, over the course of the schedules. Then we go to our facilities technician, which is currently a vacant position right now. We're looking for someone for this position. It was basically Brad's old position now is open for, looking for staff. And they provide like all the, they do like a lot of the daily preventive maintenance type issues. They handle all the, you know, like a lot of work order type processes and assistant cleaning where needed, you know, that's, we're talking to someone sick or vacation, they would step in for that role, and then equipment maintenance. And then our facility workers, could be Mary, Chad, Dennis, and Mark. They take care of more of our daily light maintenance type issues, and then they go through a lot of our daily office cleaning, daily vacuuming, cleaning offices and setting up for community events. And then our facilities, seasonal employees are more on the, they take care of a lot of our summer assistance with the cleaning of the facility, our, our, summer assistance, they do maintenance of the scrubbing and groundskeeping and type of assistance like that. And then assistant and maintenance staff are needed if we need that type of setup. Then we go to the recent projects, kind of what we went through. We've, obviously, we've done a lot with the remodel project. We've done quite a bit of different things over the year. Been anywhere from, you know, just managing that and trying to keep up with moving people and trying to keep staff doing the things they need to do on a daily basis through that project. We also have done with the remodel project, or the boiler replacement project in LEC and jail, or over at the Justice Center. And then over here, we've done, we've kind of, over the year, a couple of last two years, we've replaced all of our condensing units in the government center here. Last year, we just did the unit number two and four, so we just completed that project in the last year. We did elevator modifications in the government center. That's what we just did. We finished that up this year. And then we are continuing on with the rest of the remodel, and then some of the other projects. The one that's coming up here now is where we're doing the elevator modifications to the courthouse and Justice Center.
Mr. Chair? You know, with ongoing budget concerns and so on, are there any deferred maintenance things that you have any concerns about or anything on your radar that?
Right. I mean, we always are kind of looking at, over, trying to oversee what our deferred maintenance is going to be. We're kind of taking, taking a lot of counts. I don't think anything that's not on our budget right now. We've kind of had a lot of them kind of laid out, you know, what we're doing for deferred maintenance. I mean, there's always things that pop up that, I mean, I just, I don't have a lot of control over that. I mean, it's, we try to keep a pretty good management time on how that's coming and we're coming along. And I think we do a pretty good job at that. And we have done some of them, you know, preventive maintenance type things, things that are ongoing issues. I mean, like replacing the condensing units and replacing the air handling when we needed. And we did some of that stuff through the remodel project. There still is going to be some stuff that we're going to be, that's on our list. I mean, things that we're paying attention to and watching as repairs start to go or breakdowns happen. We're going to be doing that type of work, so.
Thank you.
We've, roofs are in pretty good shape on now, right?
Yes.
Like those ones only four, five, five years probably?
This one's be four years old, I think, oh, yes.
I think Tenth Street Garage is probably our one that's getting closest, would you say?
Yeah, we were having some issues with that this summer now, so I have to do, do some looking on that. But really, on the rest of the buildings, the government center and here, we've, they're all thirty-year, really good. So that should be something we hopefully won't have to deal with for a while, but.
Yeah, well, they're big tech.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, do, do we own the food shelf building? I was never aware of that.
Yep.
I remember when they bought it, but I wasn't a commissioner then. So that maintenance is pretty, they do their own cleaning and stuff.
They do, mainly do most of it, but if they have like the furnace quits working or things like that, they'll usually call me just to kind of look at things prior to them. And typically, if it's something we can take care of, we take care of it for them. If not, they usually call somebody in and. It's pretty minimal, but, yeah, if there's needs, they usually call over and just let us know.
Well, somewhere along the way, I missed that memo. I didn't realize, I guess I should have realized.
They do, we kind of looked at the roof. I think when I first, I don't know, that roof is getting, I mean, that's fairly, an older roof now. I mean, that's getting there, it's probably twenty years.
How long have we had the building? We've had the building.
I'm trying to remember the date when we purchased that.
We leased it to them, started in two thousand and five, so probably around that time.
And I think that's when we did the roof not too long after that because we're having issues. And then, and that's probably the biggest thing I've been involved with over there, and that was when we did that. But usually, anything that has to do with the structure of the building, we kind of, we'll kind of oversee and look at just if they have questions on stuff like that, to maintain it.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair? Just want to express our appreciation for all the work everybody did on Wednesday for the picnic. I thought that was great.
Yeah, it was kind of a busy day for us on the other side. I didn't get over there until later. But, yes, our staff did a great job. They, they all stepped up and they.
They always do.
They do awesome. I mean, I got, I have to say, I have one of the, they're, one of the best staffs I can ever imagine that way because they all step up and do the things they need to do when they need to do it, so.
Good.
Well, the one thing, the folks that come to our two centers, either Justice Center or here, you know, you kind of do that green thumb thing, you know? You look to see if it's clean, and that is one thing, your staff gives us a very good image. When, when our folks walk in, they see something that's clean, neat, and looking good.
Green thumb?
Yeah, I, I got the wrong one there.
White glove.
Goes at the other boy. All right.
No, and that's one thing I think we really, I really like to see, like, when you walk into the building, it just, I mean, I like to have that, you know, look of, you know, hey, this is something we are proud of. And, I mean, the community is a good thing to have a, you know, nice, nice facilities in the community, so.
I continue, continue to hear good things too about people that. I continue, continue to hear good things too about people at the remodel project, like in the annex over there, you know, just surprised how well it turned out, you know, how much space was in there and stuff, so.
Yeah.
Credit to your team.
Thank you.
So please pass that, you know, our appreciation on to your staff, they do a great job. Any other questions for Joel? All right, thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And now for our administrator.
I, I just wanted to very briefly just say thank you for the successful county picnic that we had this week. Unfortunately, as you all know, I was unable to be there, but I've heard positive things from people who were there and so special thanks to the five of you for your financial contribution to that, but also for the work that you do to help cook the burgers and the, or hot dogs and then serve them out, so, thank you. That is all I have for our report.
Okay. All right, who'd like to start with committee updates?
I can start, I'm going to be very brief. Darren and I met with Holly and we had the election canvassing, the primary in Kingston, Kingston Township, I believe it was, so. And that was, that's about all I had going on this week, it was a great, long holiday weekend.
Okay.
That's it for me.
All right. Who's next?
Well, I'll just, you know, express my appreciation for Cheryl for giving me a call because, you know, I was like, what? So, so the lesson is, if Darren is two minutes late, he probably does not know he should be there.
Yeah.
So, do you think that was the case with Commissioner Schmidt this morning?
I text you, I told you.
Oh, is it, am I on?
Yeah.
Oh, that was, I guess I did jump in there, didn't I?
I guess you're two minutes late.
Yeah, right. Well, we did our, our last map meeting, that was, you know, again, that's just kind of plugging along, I guess, I mean, Paul was there and we're still trying to work through, I think, a number of how everything works and how we want to tackle the problem, you know, and that's a, almost a continual thing. I, I still struggle a little bit with the, the desire to do qualitative research from us, this is, they're just, I struggle with that a little bit, that's, you know. And then we've got, I just did a couple of, I did do an online, a couple of our no, our no before things, I finally got caught up and I think those are all done, so I was successful in thwarting a few phishing attempts, so I was pretty excited about that, so. That's about all I got.
Okay. Professor Steve?
Go ahead, Ben. So I didn't, I think I, well, I didn't have much, I had a hot pick on the shelter. We're still working on, on getting part of a estate that we have coming. Hopefully the lawyers aren't going to eat up all the money. Something, you know how attorneys are.
With the insurance companies and attorneys, if you get anything.
What do you do, you know? And then we're still looking at buying a business to try to become self-sufficient. Don't want to get into that too much. We raised over seven hundred dollars on our bingo and then we had another fundraiser, I forget what it was, that got another twelve hundred last month. They're always trying to raise their own money, which I give them kudos for. September fourteenth, there's going to be an opportunity for pet photos, I believe it's going to be at Robins Island, so be a great opportunity to get some pictures for a Christmas card or something. Corey, you have a pack you could bring over. So, yeah, that's, I, I, otherwise I have not been busy, so, that's it.
Steve?
All right, primary thing that I had on the nineteenth was our last board meeting that day, Trinity Lutheran in Grove City had their annual mission barbecue and went to that and some of those funds, they always make a donation. Trinity is very generous towards the Grove City Care Program, so between the two, they work together quite well, so went to that. And then that Wednesday through Friday, I had AMC, just, ah, strategic planning session and that was out in Hastings. And some of the things that we had our, our board meeting afterwards and just some conversations that were held, Dakota County's looking at it on budget, Dakota County's at a nine point nine percent, Scott's around twelve, Cass is flirting with sixteen, I just read on the McAnoo, you know, Akins looking at a fourteen, you know, so those are numbers that are being tossed around throughout the state. We talked about the upcoming next week is the Fall Policy Conference, they're going to have Senator Asmussen, Representative Feist and Representative Torkelson there, they were going to have Grand Housechild there, Senator Housechild, he I believe has canceled, so they're looking for a fill-in for him. And I think I mentioned this before, that the Meeker will be there to do, present Tina and her group will be there.
Possibly, yes.
Possibly.
They were working out some scheduling and seeing how it will fit into that, so.
Oh, okay, okay.
That's the word that I got at the end of last week.
Hopefully, is what we'll talk about there. Other things, goodness, they talked, we talked quite a bit about the premier business partner program that does a lot of funding for AMC. When that program started back in twenty seventeen, they're at about eighty-one thousand dollars order revenue. Over the years, they're going to be up again this year, it's, it increased to a hundred and twenty-eight thousand by twenty nineteen and this year in twenty twenty-five will be three hundred and twenty thousand, four hundred dollars. So they continue to grow in that area, which takes pressure off of individual counties, creates a lot of revenue. We do have Matt Freeman has stepped down, he, so there, we approved hiring a new person, he was big on HHS or DHS, and he moved on to different things, I'm not sure what, but they are looking to fill that position and we are hiring, we did approve to hire a new, or bring on a financial person because our current financial person is going to be stepping down, so they wanted some overlap there. And so those are some, couple new positions, one, both backfilling, I guess is how I'll say, one's backfilling and one's overlap, two backfill, so. Other than that, Grove City Care has flowed along quite well, they had their windmill days, parade, things like that, all went well. What else do I have here from them? They do not seem to be affected by any of the Medicaid cuts over there, right now, they've kind of were asking me if they should be worried about anything because they haven't heard anything and I said, no, that means you're on the right side of the Medicaid pendulum, if you will. So, another than that was the county picnic and the budget work session.
So how many premier business partners do we have?
Ooh, that's a really good question.
But then there's the next level down, that's the.
There's tiers. It's, it's all premier business partner, but there's levels.
Tiers within it?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
And I, I, I want to say like a hundred and twenty-five, but that might be, I might be overshooting that, that's a guess.
And some of them are more generous than others?
Yes.
Yeah, like H two overseer seems to be a big player.
Well, and, and actually a lot of credit go, Kevin Hendrickson from Hennepin County Commissioner has stepped onto that committee and he's been really good at finding avenues to, to create new enticement for people to join in and create, create opportunities for them to, you know, it's a two-sided, two-way street there, so. So, but it's been successful, so. Some of the big things out of the strategic planning.
Okay. Well, we had, as Darren alluded to, we had the mapping in our suicide prevention meeting. Scavenger Hunt is coming to a close on, do you remember what date that was?
I think it's coming up this next week.
The twelfth.
Next, oh, the twelfth, yeah.
Next week.
So, it looks like we've had another successful year with our scavenger hunt, so that's always kind of fun. Then I had a full joint powers board meeting of CPT. If you recall, we bought the building that, that houses CPT probably a year ago or so, but we bought it with the intention that we knew the other side needed to be remodeled and so they now had some rough dollar figures. And the board did approve, the building committee to move forward, not to exceed three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars on that. And I just want to remind you, we're, we're one-twenty-fourth owners of CCT, so it is our building, it is our, our money. As you recall, I think it was, when did we get our last payback, Andrew, was that last year?
Last year.
Yeah, last year. And we're still sitting on about two million dollars in the bank there, so, and we're in a pretty good position. Andrew was on the Strategic Planning Committee, which I understand is going to, this fall now it's going to get rolling again. We had a big discussion there and I, and I really want to bring this up because as an owner of, accounting owner, we use a lot of programs that they offer, okay? We don't use just one or two. I think we're right around ten or eleven programs that they offer that approve. But we recently had a county that was having difficulty with one of our programs and instead of contacting CPT and saying, this is where our struggles are, can you help us? They went out with an RFP and signed on with another company to do their payroll. And so that's another, you know, they're a benefactor of the paybacks, however, you know, when if you're not even going to use our product, it makes it a little tough. And I don't believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't believe that there's been an increase in the cost of the counties, like the tax program.
There has been.
Yes, but it's been very minimal.
It's a handful of percent each year.
Yeah, so we bought that for that very reason, have been able to control costs.
Well, if they're, if we're owners, why are they raising the price for us at all?
Well, you still have your, your fixed costs.
They're sitting on two, how many million?
Two million.
So, are, do they ever, not to interrupt you, but are they still talking about bringing, giving some dividends back or no?
Yeah, but we, we, we don't really have a threshold for that. I think we had three million in the bank the last time we did it. So as we get done with the remodel and so forth and we build our fund back, yeah, we'll have that final payment.
When we bought into this, that was one of the things that was really stressed, that everything was going to get so much cheaper for us and I feel like we're still outsourcing a lot of our IT, so maybe I'm just off on the way.
Well.
And maybe it's fine, I'm not saying it's not, but I don't know if we got everything we were promised, is all I'm saying.
If we look at some of the comparisons of folks doing the tax program, such as, I don't want to name a name, but there is one organization that competes very heavily with us and their costs are far greater than ours.
I'm sure.
Far greater.
So that's the advantage and.
So.
Because there was some, there was some different opinions when we did this, I think it's turned out to be a good thing, but, so.
Well, they've done things, like we had a demo on, like for highway people that are out there and they're working on roads, they can actually put it into their phone when they switch which road they're working on. And so one of the questions Roger M. Dickie asked was, well geez, what about our ditch inspectors? If they're hitting two or three multiple ditches a day, they could go on their cell phone and switch over to that other ditch when they, that was a good point, you know? So they're looking to make enhancements wherever we can and make the product better. But the big discussion was, hey, if they're having trouble with what you are using, we can't fix what we don't know is broken. And so they were encouraged, all commissioners were encouraged to go back and, and talk to their staff and say, all right, here's the programs we have offered at CPT and here's the programs we're currently using, how are they functioning? And then report back, so.
Well, I was going to say, I was, I was on, on the meeting and I, it was really helpful for me to actually, when they, they live demoed some of the, the programs, it was nice to actually see them and how they worked and, you know, that I think was, was pretty helpful, just for me to have a better understanding of what we're working with. But I think the other thing is that, like you said, is, you know, we in a sense need to be, not the guinea pigs, but you know, the test ground for, for our own product so that, because aren't we getting more, we've got some Minnesota, or North Dakota clients and I didn't consider that because that's a whole different legislative landscape that you're dealing with, so.
And we recently added to our tax program, Fairbowl, they are not an owner of county. So as, we want to have premier product when it's all done, you know? Because the more of those folks that we get that aren't owners but are paying into our programs, better off we are, so. But that's about it for me, yes, employee picnic and I want to thank every one of our employees for what they do for us. I, I said it that day and I, I'll say it again, I think they make us very proud to go to meetings and hold our head high that Meeker County is a very good county, so. That's.
Mr. Chair, just one other odd thing, just, I did walk the Red Rooster Parade and Steve caught up to me. I went through, I don't know how many pockets full of business cards, which was positive.
Didn't you hand out any candy when I do throw one? It's buckets of candy, come on.
I was just, it was just me, I didn't have a vehicle, it was just me walking and so, but it was kind of nice, you know, and ran into, you know, Steve caught up to me again and passed me.
He's got longer legs.
The other thing, um.
I wasn't giving all business cards.
The next day, well, you know, the next day, I did have a conversation with a neighbor who was walking by, clunks down on my porch and he and his wife, we had a really good conversation. The wife was actually in charge of the, of the parade, but what was interesting is this gentleman was a, a former Dassel City Council person, but he was also the alternate at the big trial that was recently concluded. And so I'm asking him, I'm just going to, you know, so what did you think? How was the process? How did that all go? Your impressions? Overall, very, very positive. He was like, you know, Randy knew her stuff and everything was in good order and, so it was nice to hear just from a random person who has, you know, a knowledgeable background in this type of thing. He was very complimentary about his experience as a alternate juror on a, you know, fairly complicated case or something like.
And I visited your Red Rooster Days yesterday for their famous chicken.
You did? When, what time was that?
You know, I went at around, it was about eleven fifteen when we got there. I walked up to the ticket booth, there was two couples in front of us buying tickets, got the tickets, walked straight in, got my chicken and it came out and the line was probably a hundred, a hundred and fifty feet long.
It did, it varies.
Timing is everything.
Everything. And it was as good as it always is, man, I tell you. That, that big long brick, you know, they're sitting there making that chicken and that smell will kill you.
Yeah, oh yeah, that smell.
Yeah, so.
So, you know what, next time, this is, that just occurs to me, seeing you and seeing you, when you're, you, you know, I literally live within sight of the chicken bar.
Oh, really?
And you guys got to give me a call and stop by and, you know, sit down on my porch for a, you know, a.
A good honest opinion like you got earlier.
Can you guys do this later, we're short behind.
All right.
One at a time to avoid meaningless.
Holy moly.
With that, is there any other?
That reminds me.
Is there any other business come before us? Hearing none, I will adjourn this meeting, we will take about a five-minute break and then we will come back and continue on with the work session, so.